Students from Sedgefield come forward and help us open the meeting. First, we'll hear from Jocelyn Burns, a fifth grade student who I talked to earlier, and she's going off to Huntington Middle School next year. And then we'll hear from a second grade student, Briar Rose Polk, and she will lead us in the pledge. But first, I'd like to have Jocelyn come forward, introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about you, and then lead us in the invocation, please.
Good evening. Hello, the school board. My name is Jocelyn Burns. I'm a fifth grader at Sedgefield Elementary, and today I'm going to be presenting you with a poem entitled "School."
Perfect.
"School." "School is something we must all embrace, knowledge we need to seek out and chase. Subjects and teaching styles are plentiful and varied, just like the backpacks we all need to carry. Sports clubs and activities at every single turn, so much to do, study and learn. To get the most from school, we should consistently attend. Around each corner, there's always a friend. Our favorite teachers are friendly and kind, their passion and job to expand every mind. School is something we must all embrace, just remember to learn at your own pace." By AnitaPoems.com.
Jocelyn, that was terrific. You'll no doubt have plenty more opportunities to, you know, open the school board meeting as you work your way up through the grades. Thanks for coming tonight. And now, I'd like to ask our second grade, Sedgefield student, Briar Rose Polk, to come forward, and she's, first, tell us a little about yourself, and then, you're going to have to ask us all to stand and lead us in the pledge.
My name is Briar Rose Sierra Polk, and I am a second grader at Sedgefield Elementary. My teacher is Mrs. Cooper, and I'm glad that I could be here tonight with you all. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm glad that I could come here tonight.
Thank you both. Thank you to Jocelyn and Briar Rose, and I'd also like to have any family members who came tonight, who helped get these kids up to the point where they've got the guts to lead us in opening the session. If you'd please stand, we can give you a round of applause.
Yeah.
Teachers, family involvement, specials?
Yeah, and I'd like to ask the Assistant Principal, Anthony, and anybody else from Sedgefield to stand, so we can recognize you. Thank you, Mr. Perry. Thank you for everything you all are doing. Sedgefield's a very important school to us, and you're involved in big work there. You have, you know you have our support. So, and, so, thank you, thank you all for coming tonight. Terrific job. All right. The next item is Board Recognitions, and we have an energy thing and a big thing.
We do have two. We have two big Newport News Public Schools initiatives that are going to get recognized tonight in our plant services world and in our academic world. So, Ms. Price will help us, and we'll go down front.
It is a pleasure to present this month's recognitions. Energy Star is a voluntary U.S. Environmental Protection Agency program that delivers environmental benefits and financial value through superior energy efficiency. Most consumers are familiar with the little blue energy mark on our appliances, but since 1992, Energy Star has also worked with businesses and public sector organizations to transform the way that commercial buildings and plants use energy. Many companies and organizations are now using Energy Star to adopt an energy management strategy and identifies ways to save energy, cut costs, and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. An important component of the process is the Energy Star certification. Plants, schools, and other public buildings are using a rating system to compare actual energy performance to similar facilities nationwide. The most efficient buildings earn Energy Star certification for superior energy performance. Tonight, we're pleased to acknowledge that Haydenwood Elementary School has earned Energy Star certification. On average, Energy Star buildings use 35% less energy and cause 35% fewer greenhouse gas emissions than similar buildings. Earning this certification is, of course, a group effort, so tonight, we're recognizing several members of our plant services team and the school leadership. Would you please come forward? Louis Stepp, our energy manager. Dennis LaFever, our plumbing supervisor. Darren Muncy, our HVAC Systems Integration Specialist. Gary Wheeler, our HVAC supervisor. And Annette Walls, the principal of Haydenwood Elementary School. Annette gets the beautiful plaque to hang in the school building. At Haydenwood, the energy management team has installed a water source heat pump system, LED lighting in the hallways and the outside of the building, water-saving fixtures, and a tankless water heater. In addition, the older windows have been replaced with thermal plane windows. The school has a highly reflective Energy Star-rated roof, and other stringent energy control measures are in place. Haydenwood is the fourth school in Newport News to earn this designation, following Epps, Greenwood, and Palmer. So again, we congratulate this team on their energy-saving efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you all so much.
We will continue our efforts. We know that additional School Division buildings will earn this certification. Each year, the National School Boards Association Magna Awards Program recognizes school districts taking bold and innovative steps in educating students. An independent panel of board members, administrators, and other educators review hundreds of submitted programs and select the top for recognition. We are proud to announce that Newport News Public Schools earned a first-place award for Spark, the Summer Program for Arts, Recreation, and Knowledge. Tonight, our school board chairman and our superintendent are receiving a plaque to commemorate this honor. Launched last summer, Spark is a unique summer program that extends learning into the community. Morning programming gives students hands-on academic learning experiences in English and math. Through the expertise and support of sponsors, students engage in a variety of enrichment offerings in the afternoon, including art, music, dance, athletics and recreation, mentoring, STEM activities, career readiness initiatives, youth development programs, and field trips. With a wealth of quality programming, no tuition costs, three meals and transportation provided, Spark is transforming the summer for students in Newport News. During its inaugural summer, Spark served over 2,000 students at three schools. With a state-funded $1.2 million grant for extended learning and other funding, Newport News Public Schools is expanding Spark during the summer of 2016 to provide academic and enrichment opportunities to 6,000 Newport News students at 10 schools. The award was officially announced locally at a Spark partnership breakfast held on March 8th, during which Newport News Public Schools was able to recognize and thank the 37 partners that generously supported Spark last summer. Our School Division and other Magna Award recipients are featured in the April 2016 edition of the American School Board Journal. In addition, the school board will receive the award for Spark at the School Leaders' Luncheon during the National School Boards Association Annual Conference in April. Again, on behalf of the school district, we thank all of those who helped make Spark possible, from our leadership teams to the teachers and others who worked in the schools to our 37 partners. Again, thank you very much for your support. Again, thank you and congratulations to our honorees from our plant services and from Haydenwood. At this time, we're going to take a five-minute break, so our honorees may leave if they choose to do so. During the time, during this time, our viewing audience at home will have the opportunity to view this month's School Board Spotlight, which features our award-winning Spark program. So we'll stand in recess for about five minutes. Thank you.
This past summer, over 2,000 students spent six weeks engaged in a brand-new program focusing on finding the fun in learning. Summer Program for Arts, Recreation, and Knowledge, known as Spark, enjoyed a wonderful inaugural summer at Marshall Early Learning Center, Huntington Middle School, and Heritage High. This entirely new concept of summer education was offered voluntarily to kindergarten through high school students in the southeast community. Spark was funded by Newport News Public Schools, along with a grant from the city of Newport News, to offer our youth a positive and meaningful educational experience during the summer months. And at no cost to families, students received a wealth of resources and unique opportunities. Transportation to and from their neighborhoods was provided, along with three healthy meals to keep the students energized throughout the day. In the classrooms, talented teachers and coaches offered high-quality education with an extra emphasis on arts and physical education, exposure to college, career, and citizenship programs through hands-on activities and involved business partners, and students explored beyond the classroom walls through fun and educational field trips across Hampton Roads. The Spark experience was split into two parts. The first half of the day focused on hands-on academic learning, while the afternoon presented an engaging range of enrichment opportunities. For elementary-age students, the morning's classroom instruction was offered through the Summer School Learning Lab, which took place at Marshall and Huntington. Non-Spark students at McIntosh Elementary also enjoyed the Innovative Learning Lab, making this unique learning experience accessible to students living in other parts of the city. This three-year-old program focused on STEM-related activities, where students teamed up to design, build, and share their engineering creations. For middle-school students, classroom time focused on creative instruction in reading and math, with an emphasis on leadership skills and college readiness through the newly-resurrected Gear Up Virginia program. Grading classwork wasn't needed, and no homework was sent home, since the importance was creating a fun learning environment where students enjoyed learning and creating. In the afternoon, students explored a range of unique enrichment opportunities that focused on arts, physical education, and college and career readiness. Business and community partners played a vital role in this aspect of Spark by bringing their expertise into the classroom. In various art classes, students created three-dimensional artwork, wrote and illustrated creative comic books, and explored different styles of art and storytelling. Students also enjoyed music classes, learning to play different instruments or singing. A partnership with Soundscapes, a nonprofit corporation focused on changing lives through music, worked with Spark students and staff to host an impressive concert, and students were constantly on the move with a variety of physical education options. Teachers and coaches designed creative athletic games to keep students active. A boot camp-style class combined yoga, high-intensity strength training, and healthy exercise. And on the stage, dance classes united the worlds of artistry and physical fitness. Through this focused approach to fun physical activities, some students increased their healthy habits over the summer by losing weight and building strength. Getting out of the classroom was also a huge benefit. Students enjoyed trips to Spare Time's bowling alley in Hampton, playing games, watching movies, and hanging out with friends at the Boys and Girls Club, or visiting area museums on educational field trips to expand the students' experiences. By offering and involved an engaging summer learning program to so many students in Newport News, the schools are preparing more children for the new school year after they enjoyed a summer reinforcing the academic, social, and emotional gains made from the previous school year. And by extending learning opportunities through the summer months, Newport News Public Schools is providing safe and nurturing learning environments when many students need them most. This allows our students to gain more knowledge and real-world experiences as they become college, career, and citizen-ready.
Okay, we're back, we're back into our regular session. Before we move on with the regular agenda, I'd like to recognize two very important guests with us tonight, Vice Mayor Rob Colan from City Council and City Manager Jim Bory, who was, he studied architecture and is the architect of the One City Marathon, which was a spectacle this weekend, and has certainly, your leadership has opened new horizons and new ways of seeing our hometown. And having you here tonight just gives us, you know, a very good feeling that, you know, we're watching each other and we're working and walking together. And sometimes, I guess, we're running together.
That's right.
Thank you for coming. All right. Next is Item Two, which is a audience for the public comments, and I'd just ask if we have any cards?
I do have them.
Okay, no cards. If anybody does want to speak, there are cards out front. Just fill one out and make sure it reaches Ms. Brooks or Ms. Hinton, and we have a, we also have an opportunity for that at the end of the meeting. So, since there are no cards, we'll move on to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda consists of our board meeting minutes for the board retreat on February 12th, 2016, our minutes for the regular session of the same day, and the minutes for the special meeting and work session on February 23rd, 2016. It also includes financial reports, a revenue report for February, a expense report for February, and the child nutrition report for February. Also, at the end of the consent agenda, our personnel, is a personnel report and acknowledgements of personnel changes that involve retirements or promotions. Unless there's a reason that any board member wants to discuss any of the consent agenda, I would just ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Moved for approval and seconded. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ashby?
Four.
Mr. Hicks?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mr. Scott?
Four.
Ms. Simmonds?
Four.
And Mr. Stodgill?
Four.
Motion carries 6-0.
Okay, next, moving on to action items. We have personnel actions.
No, don't have any.
No personnel actions tonight. Okay. Good. Moving on to Item 4.02, we have the Proposed 2016-2017 School Calendar. We heard a report on that, I think, last month, and it's in front of the board tonight for adoption. Do I have, do I have a motion to adopt the calendar for next year?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Are there any comments or discussion? Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Ashby?
Four.
Mr. Hicks?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mr. Scott?
Four.
Ms. Simmonds?
Four.
And Mr. Stodgill?
Four.
Motion carries 6-0.
All right, moving on to Item 4.03, the Proposed Fiscal Year 2017 Operating Budget. We had a public hearing on this a week ago?
Yes, we did.
And we were presented the budget, I think, two weeks before that by, as the superintendent's recommended budget. And since then, the work at the General Assembly has finished up, and we have a better picture of what that looks like. Tonight, we're going to, we're going to be taking the budget up in two steps, and that's really designed to make sure that our vice chair here, who, whose spouse is a guidance counselor, that we don't have any conflict of interest. So before we, before we move to take that item up, I think the superintendent would like to give us a summary of the budget.
I would. I'd like to give you an update tonight based on the General Assembly budget. You know that we have been working from the governor's budget, so I want to give you an update. We've updated the budget to, for a total of $305,598, and this is based on the General Assembly-approved budget now. So I'd like to explain the differences in this recommendation and my previous recommendation. The General Assembly budget supports teacher raises for next school year instead of fiscal year 2018, as our previous recommendation. So this change results in $1.4 million to Newport News Public Schools from the General Assembly. At the same time, the General Assembly's budget also reduces our at-risk funds and our funds for additional teachers, and that reduction totals $1 million. So this results in a $400,000 increase to our budget, and we will add this to our cash capital for our building improvements in the schools. And this addition would enable the city to reduce their cash capital that was promised by the city council from $2 million to $1.6 million.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, so, in order, in order to make sure that Mr. Hunter doesn't have a conflict of interest, we're going to take this budget adoption up in two measures, and there'll be a Part One, and Part One will be the budget that includes everything except for salary that is involved in Mr. Hunter's wife's position as a counselor. So do I have a, do I have a motion?
Move for adoption of the budget.
Okay, and, and I think we would, we officially have to read the motion to include the number...
Mr. Chairman, to adopt the fiscal year 2017 proposed operating budget as recommended by the superintendent, with the exception of the salary impact for Mrs. Sylvia Hunter in the amount of $305,598, the 2016-2017 salary schedules and supplements, the 2016-2017 Workers' Compensation Fund budget of $2,072,000, the Tech Split Fund budget of $1,719,219, and the 2016-2017 Child Nutrition Fund budget of $171,000, $160,000.
Okay, moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Okay, having no discussion, let's proceed to call the roll.
Mr. Ashby?
Four.
Mr. Hicks?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mr. Scott?
Four.
Ms. Simmonds?
Four.
And Mr. Stodgill?
Four.
Motion carries 6-0.
Okay, so we just adopted the bulk of our budget for next year, and I need a second part, which is addressing the component of the budget for which Mr. Hunter, his family has a position involved. So do I have a motion for that portion?
I have a motion.
Well, before you do that...
Okay, we'll hold.
I'd like to make a statement. I've been advised by our council that the State and Local Conflict of Interest Act requires that I disclose any personal interests in a transaction that is termed as defined in the act. My spouse is employed by the School Division and voting on a budget as it affects her as deemed a personal interest in a transaction before the board. An officer of the local government who has a personal interest in a transaction is disqualified from participating in that transaction. Therefore, I would not participate in the discussion of or vote on the transaction.
Okay. So I think that's pretty clear. All right. Do we have a motion?
Yes, so, for budget, motion two, to adopt the portion of the FY '16 proposed budget, which represents the salary of Mrs. Sylvia Hunter, spouse of school board member Gary Hunter, inclusive of the 3% pay increase, which is consistent with the superintendent's recommendation, for all employees for the 2016-2017 school year be approved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Let's call the roll, please.
Mr. Ashby?
Four.
Mr. Hicks?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Abstained.
Mr. Scott?
Four.
Ms. Simmonds?
Four.
And Mr. Stodgill?
Four.
Motion carries five in favor with one abstention.
Okay, and we look forward to a year that looks more like recovery from all the years that we've sat here and seen budgets reduced and bad news coming out of the General Assembly. We appreciate everything the city does for the School Division. This is your school system, and as my father liked to say, when I told him, I said, "Well, it's the state who needs to give us more money." He said, "No, it's not the state's money. It's your, it's our money. We need to get it back for Newport News." So this year, we're pleased to be able to report that we're doing that. All right, the next portion of our agenda is devoted to reports. Item 5.01, we'll hear a report on model teachers.
Dual language.
Are you ready?
Dual language immersion.
Language diverse.
All right.
Can we change that?
Let's move, let's move to the revised agenda, and Item 5.01, which is dual language immersion.
There you go.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Chairman Stodgill and Dr. Kilgore and members of the school board. I can't tell you how excited I am to be here to talk to you about my very favorite subject, which is our dual-language immersion program that is now in its second year. I'm Helen Small. I'm the Instructional Supervisor for World Languages here in Newport News, and our goal for dual-language immersion is to help students really become truly, truly global citizens so that they can be bilingual, speaking and listening and understanding two languages, be biliterate, so that they can read and write at high levels, and be able to navigate two cultures, and do all of that while maintaining high academic standards. As you can imagine, that's quite a tall order. This program allows our English-speaking students, half of the students in the program are English speakers, half are Spanish speakers. It lets the English speakers have the time, by starting in kindergarten, to become truly proficient in Spanish, and it lets our Spanish speakers develop their first language skills, which builds their capacity in the second language, because you don't speak your second language better than your first, and people sometimes forget that. So dual-language programs have exploded across the country. In the past 10 years, they've doubled in number to over 450 across the nation. I'm pleased to report that we're the only ones on the peninsula and in the area here. It's really a blend of two programs. One is called developmental bilingual, which is for ESL students to help develop their first language as they're learning English, and the other is a typical partial immersion program for language students. Both of those, in both of those programs, as an hour, students spend 50% of the school day learning regular school content in Spanish. day learning regular school content in Spanish, and the other half of the day learning in English. And the classes are mixed to have both Spanish and English speakers. What distinguishes the program is that we have two partner teachers, a Spanish-speaking teacher and an English-speaking teacher, who work closely together to teach the students. One of the benefits of this is that we don't need additional teachers for this program. We have the same number of teachers with the same number of students. They just share the students, so that the kids start off, as you can see in the schedule at the right, that's Palmer Elementary's first-grade schedule, they start the day with one teacher, learning in one language, and at the midpoint, they switch classrooms and teachers and everything, and continue learning in the other language. We have about 160 students in the program now at the two schools. That's about 20 per class, two kindergarten and two first grade at each school, and we will continue to grow the program, as you'll see, toward the end. One of the nice things about this program is that we have students learning together. You can see in the photo, we have some Spanish speakers in there. This particular class was just last week at Palmer Elementary. They were learning to count money, in Spanish, of course, in math. So I also visited Saunders last week, and we have on the left some kindergarten students learning all about caterpillars in a science lesson that took place entirely in Spanish. And we also see the first-grade teacher from Saunders over there, they were doing measurements. But I want to show you a short video from Palmer, and I may need some help in clicking on it in just a second, but let me set it up for you first. Okay, let me set it up first. The video, I want you to keep your eyes on the young lady in the blue shirt. She's not a Spanish speaker, but you will hear her speaking Spanish, and in fact, you will hear her helping her friend, who is a Spanish speaker, with her math, which is quite remarkable. So keep your eyes on the young lady in blue as we watch this, and listen for the languages that you hear. So we'll see what happens with my video. It's the link where you just were, where it said there was a potential concern, but there shouldn't be.
Okay, muy bien. Contamos juntos. Cinco, diez, quince, veinte, cinco, treinta. Seis, siete, ocho. Veintiocho, que? Zavos. Zavos, muy bien. Recuerden cuando pasamos de aquí, por aquí en Italia, no es seis, es cinco, diez, quince, veinte, veinticinco, no es treinta, porque es un cinco.
Elle me confundió.
Ajá, mira. Veinticinco, veintiséis, okay?
Siete, veintiocho, veintinueve, treinta.
Ajá, pues ahora veintiocho, okay. Te voy a dar monedas, primero le van a cortar, y después vamos a hacer diferentes, okay?
Mmm.
Ahora.
¿Cómo se terminamos a las dos?
Está su sueño. Cuando se despierte.
Así.
Sí, ahora es demás. Primero las monedas, espera, espera.
Espera. ¿Qué? Dos y dos.
Dos.
Dos y dos es veinte.
Es veinte. Okay. ¿Sabes?
Me pregunta yo si es veinte. O sí, o sí. O la pueden, o la pueden, o la pueden dar cosas de la peli.
O sea.
Why what?
Oh, sí, vendían cosas, compraba una cosa, y la segunda era un pen.
Entendéis que sí.
Okay, si ya haces las líneas, te voy a dar marcados para que uses. No. Okay, no le digas, solo escríbelo. Ya sé, porque no es verdad.
Yo ni siquiera.
No? Esta verdad?
Yes.
O no, ¿vas a usar este o no? No, okay.
No, es algo, está en boleras.
Okay, muy bien. Si no, estás marcado, es malo.
But I hope you noticed that the kids are speaking a lot in Spanish, even those that are not Spanish speakers. You will hear some English, because they're only in first grade, and it takes some time. We expect that by the end of second or third grade, they'll be entirely in Spanish and doing academic work in that. For those of you that speak Spanish, you may have heard the little girl in blue say "dos y dos es vente." Well, two and two isn't really 20, but here's her thinking. They were learning to count by, counting by fives. They did two hash marks for each dime, so two and two, that is 20 cents. So her thinking was absolutely correct. I don't want you to think that she wasn't learning math correctly. She's doing very well. And you'll see that even though some of the kids were speaking English, the teacher continued in Spanish and kept that up throughout the entire time, which is what we want. So we expect that kids who start in kindergarten like this will be able to reach, by the end of elementary or the beginning of middle school, reach the same level as our advanced placement students in high school, and by the time they graduate from high school, they could have the equivalent of a minor or even a major in Spanish. If they stay with the program, K-12, which is what we hope they will do, we do hope that families will commit to the long term with this program. Not only do they do better in Spanish, but they tend to do better, according to most of the research I've seen, on test scores of English and math, the longer they stay in the language, because there are benefits just to being bilingual. So we have the program at two schools. Here at Palmer Elementary, for example, you can see our kindergarten teacher, Ms. Repert, and Ms. Mendezable. We also have Ms. Phillips on the English side, and Ms. Williams is the assistant. I don't think anybody from Palmer was able to come tonight. They had very short notice from me. To get into the program, students have to be zoned for Palmer or Saunders Elementary, and they fill in an application to get into the kindergarten program. We chose those two schools in particular because they already had a high percentage of Spanish-speaking students, so that we could easily serve that population of kids. And moving on to Saunders, is there a trick? Am I supposed to point it at the screen? Oh, I'm there. Good, okay, never mind. So Saunders, some of the Saunders people are here tonight, and if I could ask them to stand in the back, we have Principal Tim Edwards, we have Ms. Navarro, the kindergarten teacher, Ms. Abbott, the kindergarten assistant, and Ms. Seles, the first-grade teacher. But I'd be remiss if I didn't also mention the hard work of Ms. Eberhart and Ms. Hall, who are our English partner teachers. Those two teachers have to spend a lot of time together and plan how they're going to deliver our curriculum in the two languages, and do it in a balanced way. We have been very fortunate to find, we've been really fortunate to find highly qualified teachers from within our own ranks, or just through our normal hiring process, and we are looking ahead now already for next year and the coming years. These teachers have to be regular elementary-certified teachers, and they have to have a high proficiency in Spanish. We usually ask that they take the praxis or show, demonstrate in some, through some assessment, what their proficiency level is. So, and I've already mentioned that they have to plan together. We've been fortunate also to be able, now that we have a budget, and thank you very much, by the way, we've been able to send them to some training that they really needed so that they can deliver our curriculum and do it in two languages. It's quite a feat. So where do we go from here? We are right now in kindergarten and first grade. We plan to add a grade each year at each of the schools, eventually funnel those kids into a middle school, which has yet to be determined, and a high school. And when they get to middle and high school, they'll continue to take advanced-level Spanish classes, literature, language, and so on. They can probably take the AP class in ninth grade if they're mature enough for that, and also one other content class, math, or a science, or a social studies each year. As kids move through the program, we know that there's going to be some attrition. That's normal. We can always bring in more Spanish speakers at any point in the program, so I'm hoping that that will help kids that just move into Newport News can come right into our program and get some support for their own first language. So that is all I have. What questions do you have for me about the program?
Questions of Ms. Small?
Sure. Your research that you stated on the improvement in English and math, where did you pull that information from?
I pulled that from a study that was done, there's a book about it called Dual Language for a Transformed World. I just like the title of the book. But it was a study done by Thomas &amp; Collier, they're out of Charlottesville here in Virginia. They did a huge study of thousands and thousands of students all across North Carolina, and they discovered, among other things, that for our ESL students, for ESL students in the program, this is the only program that actually gets them to above-average reading in English by supporting their first language in addition to learning English, and they show consistent results. And I've seen other studies as well, but theirs is the seminal work that everybody talks about. Other studies as well that show that students do better by almost a grade level by the time they finish middle school, I think, or maybe it's high school, I don't want to oversell the program, but almost a grade level higher, not just in reading, in English, but in math, just through being involved in two languages as they go through.
Okay. Were you able to do any comparisons with the Alexandria area?
No, they do have a wonderful program, though. I haven't done any comparisons. It's difficult to find tests that are appropriate to measure kindergartners and first graders in this, so we haven't done any comparison yet, but we are collecting data. We're giving the pals español for now, and we'll see where we go from there, to see how our students do. That was a great question.
I'm so excited about this program. I wish I had kids in elementary school. I swear I would buy a house in Saunders so that I could have my kids.
Our ESL supervisor.
Yeah. Such a great program. But really, what I wanted to say is, I think for our city, I think this is a really great way of attracting professionals. I was a Spanish teacher once, and I remember parents were always wanting their kids to learn Latin. And yes, Latin can really help with vocabulary, but guess what? So does Spanish. And I think that's the effect that we see with the SOL testing and the SAT testing, that it really does help student vocabulary. And I know they have a similar program in Harrisonburg.
Yes, we visited them.
Yeah, and what I've heard from those school board members is they have people calling from Illinois and other states, saying, "How do I get my kid into your bilingual program?" So, you know, I think for the superintendent, we really need to start letting the Realtors' Association know about this exciting opportunity for kids who live in Palmer and Saunders, and also the Chamber of Commerce. And, you know, I just think it's another example of how innovative Newport News Public Schools really is, that we can try something new and really make a difference and give opportunities to our kids.
Yeah, I know I'm in the right place here, so I say that to people all the time.
Yeah, because I'd like to piggyback on what Ms. Simmonds was saying and sharing also. But just to creativity, and, you know, one of the books in which I've read is Steve Jobs, Walter Isaacson wrote the book, but the most powerful chapter in that book is to think different. And in this situation, creativity, being innovative, those are the things, the principles that have been practiced in this situation. And then as I was watching the children, you know, the engagement, the kinesthetic learning that's happening, and the children seemed excited as they, not seemed, were excited as they were learning. So you have all the entities of positive instruction happening in that situation setting. And look what it's doing with the children. It's helping them grow futuristically and holistically, it's really developing them. So hats off to the program, which has been implemented, and I know all, particularly the teachers and the whole staff that's doing it. What a wonderful demonstration and display of commitment in making a difference in the lives of children. So thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Finally, I think about Dr. Edna Conner's concept, "If I can't learn the way you teach, then teach me the way I learn."
Mm-hmm.
And it's displayed and demonstrated in that situation. So thank you, and many thanks to the staff.
Especially to the staff. You have no idea how hard they've worked to pull this together.
Oh, we could see, yes. Yeah.
All right.
Well, I just wanted to make a statement. I appreciate your presentation. The only thing that came through my mind is there a possibility for a magnet for that type of program. I know the kids are young, but shouldn't all the kids in the city have an opportunity? Maybe if we could kind of put some magnets in place, and it could be a magnet which would add to our total educational opportunity for kids. That's my take on it. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Ms. Small, thank you for leading us through that report.
My pleasure.
And your leadership. I have a daughter who's bilingual now, and it does open up a world of translation and, you know, reaching out to other cultures, and it's a stimulative thing that adds to how they think, and it can be a powerful, it can be a powerful thing to a young person to take on this new skill.
And I thank you all for your support in this as well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, moving on to item 5.02, we're going to hear a report on model classroom teachers, as I announced earlier, and Ms. Swett's going to lead us through this, so...
Absolutely.
Thank you. Welcome.
Yes, thank you. I am here tonight to give you a little bit of an update of what we've done with the model classroom program in the recent years. It's a fairly new program to us, but it is one that is growing and gaining a lot of ground as far as supporting our teachers. You can, okay, sorry. So in front of you, you see six different highlights of different ways that we support teachers. These are ways that we support new teachers and veteran teachers alike. So tonight, really, I'm centering on this one, model classrooms. You see they're circled in the red. But we also do mentor programs, which we have completely changed in recent months, and that is when a teacher has a colleague in the building that helps them and coaches them through an immediate contact right down the hall or on the same team. We also have new teacher academies and institutes where we bring teachers together to create a collaborative group of new teachers, where we can talk just about their issues. We also have, as you've heard before, our Start Smart program in Newport News, where we bring new teachers, new hires, in over the summer, and really work with them on what technology is available, how the culture is in Newport News, how we believe in smart is something you become, and what that looks like with students. Curriculum support, nonstop curriculum support as far as using the curriculum, and instructional coaching, which is really side-by-side professional development in the classroom, modeling, co-teaching, co-planning, what instruction looks like. So model classrooms is just one part of that menu of development for our new teachers. So who is it that we select as our model classrooms? They are really our model classroom teachers. They are really our exemplary classroom teachers across all content and grades. They show a real passion and pride about teaching, and it is that passion and that pride that really makes them ideal for kind of shepherding a new teacher into the profession. And we also know from our evidence and from our data that they are the teachers that are doing the most with the students in front of them. So they have success, and it is evidence. You know, there's evidence-based success that they have, and we want teachers to show other teachers how you are successful in your classroom and what that success looks like. Aside from the who, you're probably wondering, "Okay, well, tell us more about that program." As I said, it capitalizes on the teacher expertise, so it's not somebody coming into your classroom who's no longer a teacher. It's a colleague, side-by-side, doing the same work you're doing. And it also provides an immediate connection of somebody in the district who is facing and teaching and using the same curriculum, facing the same high standards test, and working in the same culture here in Newport News. And it also provides that dedicated support, because as I said, the folks we select are very passionate about what they do, and that makes them very dedicated to supporting their new colleagues. Okay, so what does the support look like? The main thing it looks like is classroom visits. So we take a new teacher, and we visit them, we visit the model classroom with a colleague. That is somebody who can stand beside them and say, "Do you see how they did that? What do you think about that? Have you tried that? Let's work on that. Write that down. How can we do that in your classroom?" And then that's part of the reflection and debriefing, which the model classroom teacher could join to ask questions, answer questions, and point out how it is that he or she established that kind of classroom. Outreach visits are the opportunities for the model teachers to come out of their classrooms and into the classroom of the new teacher, or maybe the veteran teacher seeking growth and improvement. Collaboration across the departments always happens. We have school leadership who works. They work with us on this idea of model teachers, as does the curriculum department, as does HR, as does special ed. Everybody is working together to make sure that we are really fostering the support that our newest teachers need. And then these informal communities, it's just a network for these teachers. It's just a network where they can reach out. It's really a circle of support. So you have curriculum staff, you have your administrators, you have your mentor, but you also have somebody down the road in another school also teaching fourth grade, or also teaching geometry. So it's that circle of support that we really want to wrap around teachers. So what's new about it? This real exciting thing we've been working on? We have created a video library of the classroom teachers, which can be on-demand and online. So now, instead of actually leaving your school, you can access a video of that model classroom and say, "I'm really struggling with transitions. I don't know how to work these transitions. It's not working. It's where I lose a sense of control in my classroom, and I waste time. What can I do about transitions?" It's a video library where they can pull it up and watch it, and then they can have somebody watch it with them, they can ask questions, they can establish contact with that model classroom. I'm real excited to, this is not live just yet, we're building it, but I'm real excited to say that that is the next new piece that we're doing for the model classrooms, to make it available. classrooms, to make it available to just everyone just right off of their desktop or their laptop computer. How about our progress? Well, last year, when we reported about model classroom teachers, we had a total of 16. We've increased that number to 40. So we have selected additional model classroom teachers per grade and content based on a particular expertise. We have also increased our visits. Last year total, we had 50 classroom visits. Right now, as of March, we've had 80, and the year's not over yet. So that really indicates administrators who are in total support of this type of support for their new teachers, and also teachers who are seeking out an opportunity to visit a colleague and see what's going on in their classroom, and how I can take something to improve my own classroom. So what does it look like as far as where they go? This is the website that they go to. It's just a link on our Newport News website. And they'll see something that looks like what you see there, kind of small, I know. And it could be for the administrator or for the new teacher herself to say, "Okay, here's my name, here's my email, this is the grade I need to see." And then you see, what do you hope to observe during this visit? And that is the place for the principal to indicate, "I really would like this teacher to see more about what a youth development-infused classroom looks like," or, "I need for this teacher to see what formative assessment looks like. How do you check for understanding in the middle of your lesson and respond to the needs of your students?" So if they can be specific like that, then we match them up with the right time, the right place, and the right teacher to visit to see that in action. And that's just always available. They hit send, and then we get a response, and we set up and coordinate a date. And remember, very important to this is that we do not send that teacher to the visit by themselves. They have a partner who visits with them, and that way, it's somebody to talk and debrief while they're watching the instruction. So that's really the whole program, including our progress and what is new. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
That, remember you said the person is still a teacher?
Yeah.
I think that is very, very important. So not just have somebody that was teaching five or 10 years ago, but somebody that's presently teaching, understands the terms, the jargons, the present instruction that's happening. I think that is vital and significantly important.
Absolutely. That practitioner view is, we feel, very important. Yes.
So when do teachers do these outreach visits? Over the summer or during the school year?
Oh, no, during the school year, definitely. I mean, they could continue the community throughout the summer, once we set them up with that network of support. But the outreach visits are during instructional time, so we coordinate those and provide whatever sublease we need to make the connection happen.
And so how does, how do you know what skill set the teacher needs to work on? Is it, does the principal observe the new teacher, or is it the teacher herself who says, "I need help with..."
It could be both. That one slide that we showed, if Michelle just wants to go back one, that one slide there indicates, okay, now, I happen to be a first-grade teacher, but I'm having a lot of trouble organizing my stations, and knowing when to move my stations, and when to move my students, and teaching my students that structure. I want some help with that. Or it might be a principal, through conversation with that same first-grade teacher, says, "Ah, let's get you some samples of what that looks like."
Okay.
So it is definitely through collaboration, the administrator, the teacher, including folks from the curriculum department who are in that classroom coaching that teacher in the first place.
And you're, this TV, Teach Me TV, does it have any units on classroom management, or how to have discipline in the classroom?
Absolutely. That would all come under the title of a youth development-infused classroom, and it's being built as I speak. So it is not at all, it's not something that I can say is ready to roll out. It is something we are building. We are right now collecting those types of videos from those model classroom teachers, and then storing them and collecting them into categories.
That's great. I mean, that'll be such a great resource.
Absolutely.
Because a teacher could click on it, even if they weren't signed up for this, they could just say, "Oh, I need help with..."
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Absolutely. During their planning at home, you know, when they're doing their planning, at any time.
That's great.
Other questions, comments? Mr. Scott?
So how do we take, or how do we go about, like, with our wonderful, top-notch, passionate teachers, as far as the evidence of knowing whether they were taking, let's say, grades from poor students versus some top-notch students, you know, honored students? How'd you pull that evidence to say, "These are the teachers that we need to be models"?
Well, that is why we work collaboratively with administrators, and then we use the supervisors and the curriculum team. Those are the folks that are in classrooms all the time supporting. So those two groups together kind of nominated a teacher. But then Angela Rhett and I kind of go through and say, "Okay, what do we know about this teacher? Oh, okay, well, this is a collaborative teacher, so that'd be a great example for us, because we don't have a collaborative teacher in this grade level as a model classroom. This one is tagged." That's great, but they can't all be tagged. We definitely work that out, which is why we've expanded the model classroom teachers, because we want to make sure that we're getting that kind of diversity in what they're doing in their classrooms.
All right. Thank you. Well, Ms. Swett, thank you for that report. And I would just add that I've felt for a long time that this is the kind of approach that would make a real difference, particularly with young, up-and-coming teachers. I remember when I started my profession, and you come out of school, and you've got, your zeal is up here, and you want to go do things, but you haven't learned how to get all of your, all your skills to fly in motion and synchronized. And watching others, watching mentors, watching successful leaders, watching a teacher who can command a classroom, who knows how to reach and engage students at different levels, that's a picture into what a young teacher can become. And it can short-circuit and allow them to, you know, it short-circuits the learning curve. They can figure out much earlier how to succeed in that classroom. You know, that is an issue today in teaching. A classroom is a tough environment sometimes. So to be able to bring the notion of a model teacher and talk about strengths and illustrate that worked, I think is great. And I'm really glad to see this coming forward and articulated like this. I think it's going to be great for our program. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That leaves us with our attendance report, membership report, and construction report, all of which were in the board members' packets. Unless there are any questions there, I'm going to move on to item 5.06, comments by the superintendent.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to begin tonight by sharing some good news for our school division. We've been selected by the Department of Education to host a cyber camp program for the summer. And the program, obviously, is designed to increase student awareness of cybersecurity careers and what are the workforce demands for that. As you know, that area is growing every year, and there are not people that are skilled to fill those jobs. So the camp will open this summer at Heritage High School, open to anybody that's enrolled in their STEM Academy at this point, and the camp will be held for four weeks. So we're really excited about putting that together, and then that is something we may possibly be able to grow and spread that to other schools. A second STEM opportunity, we partnered with the National Institute of Aerospace. And there was a grant from NASA, and that grant has supported us doing these eclipse programs. It's kind of a cute little name, eclipse, because it's about video clips and with science and space travel. So the students that are in our production classes here in Newport News, they're working with the NIA educators, and they're going to produce educational videos about how to teach science lessons and how to teach about STEM. Our Newport News students are going to field test the resources. Our NIA educator and residents will create the development for our teachers, will pilot it here, and then these videos will be all over the nation for teachers to use in STEM. So that's very exciting, that our kids are really creating these videos with the help of our STEM teachers here in Newport News. So we thank everybody that's involved in that. Kind of on the STEM theme tonight, we finished our, this weekend, our science, the Tidewater Science Fair. And Newport News students, we had more awards and prizes than we've ever had before in science. We had 46 of our students won prizes at the Tidewater Science and Engineering Fair. We had first and second grand prize winners from Gildersleeve, Hans, Booker T., Washington, Heritage, and Minchville. And we have the results posted on our website. So we want to congratulate the students, their families that probably had to go out and get backboards in the middle of the night, and all the teachers that helped them, their administrators, and our science supervisor, Rodney Culverhouse, for such a great whole season of science in Newport News Public Schools. This also, this week is our plant services and custodial appreciation week. So we want to take a moment to thank our staff that keeps our buildings so beautiful, so clean, and so, and the professional way that our buildings are maintained. You heard us get an award tonight for our energy savings. So I thank all of our plant service and our custodial professionals for the work that you do in our schools and our offices to make this a great place to go to school and a great place to work. Next to the last, March is Music in Our Schools Month and Youth Art Month. And so I want to just take a moment to think about our budget. And in all of the times that our budgets have been cut by the General Assembly, we never did make any cuts to art and music in this school division. And we think that's really an important way to enrich lives of kids and have our young people be smarter and smarter. So I want to thank our dedicated music teachers and our art teachers for really cultivating this talent all over our school division. And then lastly, with probably no reminder needed, April 4th through the 8th is spring break, and all of our schools and our offices will be closed. So we wish everybody a happy and a safe spring break. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. We have another opportunity for any comments by individuals or groups. Do we have any cards? Okay. No?
I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance.
We do have a card.
Yes.
Please come up. Vice Mayor Rob Coleman.
Good evening.
Welcome. Good evening.
Thank you, Chairman, Vice Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Kilgore. Thank you for this opportunity. I just wanted to come up and speak on a couple issues that I've realized and noticed here at the school system. Not real issues, but just things that I think we should all be proud of. First of all, for the last few years, I've participated in your Career Pathways Breakfast that Dr. Ann and her colleagues have organized and hosted throughout the city of our high schools with our juniors and seniors. I believe that's where I met Mrs. Ryan last year, was at Heritage High School. And what a fantastic opportunity that has been for our students to meet professionals in the career fields that they're interested in, and getting some insight from them, and about trying to get on the right path, and about being successful. So I just wanted to give some kudos to Dr. Ann and her colleagues. I would say her last name, but I do not want to butcher it.
We get it.
Thank you. I also would like to thank you on behalf of the council for inviting us and including us in the Spark Breakfast. That was a fantastic opportunity to hear about the successes, and we had already known about the success of Spark. We are very excited that you have, one, number one, created Spark. Number two, you've expanded it, especially up in the North District, which is near and dear to my heart.
You told us we had to.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. And we're also expanding the STEP program from the Youth and Gang Violence Initiative. And I don't think it was any kind of an accident or coincidence that we did have STEP and Spark in the South District last year, and we had a 17% decrease in juvenile crime. So I really don't think that was an accident. So we're really looking forward to this summer coming up. We're finding some great new opportunities for many more children in our community. So once again, thank you so much for that. Also like to thank you for having approximately 700 children participate in the One City Marathon this past weekend. It was great. You should have seen the herd running out during the nautical mile. It was fantastic. My son participated in it, too. But what a great event. And also like to tip my hat to City Manager Borre for coming up with that idea and making it a reality. We all thought it was a little crazy at first, but it has really turned into a unifying event. And that was really present with your teachers and your staff at your schools that were on the route. I think Mr. Surrey of Minchville was highlighted in the Daily Press for his participation, staff participation, student participation. It was just fantastic. So I just want to say thank you so much for that. And then last but not least, since we're here talking about the budget, I know over the last seven or eight years, it has been very difficult. We've seen, we've had some major challenges between sequestration and the economy. It's not only down to the bone now, it was down to the marrow. So I just want to applaud you, Dr. Kilgore, and the board, and especially the staff and the teachers for doing what you needed to do to provide a quality education for our kids and just a quality experience for our students. I can tell you from experience, I see it every day. I have a one-year-old son that attends Gates Elementary School. And not only is he getting an exceptional education, but he is, you're helping form and develop him into a great citizen. So thank you so much for everything that you do. And I can tell you that moving forward here, we're hoping that some of the decisions that we're making on the council for our community when it comes to business, and also some quality of life projects, we're hoping that we're going to see some real dividends from those here in the near future, and which in turn will help us support you even more moving on. So once again, thank you so much, and looking forward to partnering with you in the future and making this, I don't, it really is the greatest school system, I believe, in Hampton Roads. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. And I think you get an award. I don't think I've seen anybody pack so much into a three-minute speech. Thank you. That's what happens when you don't read the warning at the beginning of the session. So thank you. Thank you for coming, and thank you for the cooperation. All right, and that brings us around to comments by the school board. And I'd like to start with our student representative, Ms. Ryan, tonight.
Yeah, one of the comments I do have about the bilingual program was, "Where was it when I was younger?" I wish I had that. I know I took three years of Spanish in high school. I just wish it would have stuck with me more. I think learning it at a younger age truly helps the younger students grab onto it easier and have it stick with them, especially as they go up through their education. I think it's a great program. Hopefully, as my little sister is in elementary school, she will get to be a part of that program and grow into it as well as it moves up the steps. I also wanted to say something about the One City Marathon. I wasn't able to go. I wish I could have, because I saw Heritage and all the other high schools cheering on the runners. I wish I could have been a part of that. But hopefully, next year, I can come back from college and actually participate and help out then. So that's all the comments I have tonight.
Awesome. Thank you. Mr. Scott?
Yes, I'd also like to touch on the dual-language program. I can remember years ago, me and Shelley, we went up to our school board here in Virginia, the association. And I think at the time, we were talking about adding it on and seeing the program grow as it has. It's been touching to my heart. I think at that time, we were probably looking for a school that was just, like, all Spanish. But this is better, I believe. This is better, because we get a variety of students in there, and they both get to learn at the same times. So I definitely appreciate it, and I'm glad that the staff got that going, and thank you for your hard work. Also, recently, our schools, well, as far as I know, Woodside High School was in a contest for the Computer Design Challenge, which was at ODU. And I think it was sponsored by the WHRO, and they placed second, second place. I believe they had second place over there. I know this is something that Doug or Mr. Brown would feel dear to his heart, because he's all about competing when it comes to anything with math and science and things like that. So that was a great, great thing for our schools and great opportunity. And also, I'd like to thank the city council and their staff for approving us and giving us funds in their previous years. And I'm looking and hoping that they'll continue to do the same things in the upcoming years, and of course, this year. So I just want to say thanks for everything you guys have done to provide us with a great school system and all the opportunities. This is pretty close to what Gary would say, but exciting things are always happening in Newport News. uh, exciting things, uh, always happen in Newport News. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Mr. Hicks?
I just wanted to thank all the persons tonight who gave reports. Um, and I want to thank our special two guests tonight along with the young lady, I don't know her name, but I just want to say that we, we really need to work together because I moved to Newport News when it was a very small city, has grown to be a big city, but all of the cities important. And the way I look at it, the schools are important, s- s- government is important, but more importantly, our kids are important. And I think whatever we can do to make Newport News Public Schools better, we're going to need the help of the citizens, city council, school board members, and everyone in this community. And I want to go on record as saying that I know that we have one of the best school divisions in the state. Teddy Hicks can quote me on that one. And in a school division our size with our population, we stand shoulder to shoulder to everybody. Thank you, Dr. Kilgore, for your work and Chairman, thank you for your job.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Ms. Simons?
Um, well, I attended the Tidewater Science and Engineering Fair on Saturday and I was so proud that we had so many Newport News Public School students, um, with projects in the science fair. I heard that, um, we were the division with the most winners, um, this year, which I think really says a lot about our, um, emphasis on STEM throughout our city. It really does. We're, we're, we're really getting kids' attention. Um, and this weekend, we will have a really neat event called Math Mardi Gras. And this is part of our family engagement and I, I always hear from people in the community, we need to get parents involved. Well, parents, you are invited this weekend to, um, Warwick High School for Math Mardi Gras. And it's even a great opportunity for grandparents. If you want to get into our schools and, and see what's happening and learn, uh, some math games that you can do at home with your kids. It's a really great opportunity. So, um, Saturday from ten, ten AM to two PM at Warwick High School. And, um, that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Ashby?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. And first thing I'd like to say, I think among sitting here, there, one of us is a valedictorian.
One?
One of us is a valedictorian. Can we give a big Mardi Gras?
Thank you.
Completely forgot.
Congratulations to you. I'm sure that's from the board and everybody. Well, congratulations to you. My comments are just very, very brief. I'd also like to thank our guest, um, Mr. Vice Mayor and City Manager. Thank you also very much for coming. Thank you for your support. Um, and as you heard, Mr. Hicks said that we are doing this together. So the collaborative, the cohesive effort that's needed, and one of the things which this board adamantly believes in is we are investing in our greatest resource. Our greatest resource in our city are our children. Um, so along with the city council, mayor, the city manager, and the school board, that's essential and imperative. That, that'd be our mindset, uh, our paradigm of thinking in reference to growing our children. And that's what we are all about. We received the award for the, the Spark, uh, program, but it's really hats off to those that created and worked in Spark. Because Spark was a phenomenal, phenomenal situation and setting. And one of the people, which I love reading and hearing speak is Willie Jolly. And he says, you know, if your dream is big enough, circumstances, challenges, they really do not matter. So as the superintendent, senior staff, and those that, um, created Spark and put Spark together, they had a dream. They had a vision. They had aspiration. And look what wound up happening. It was an extremely successful and now it's growing, developing, and expanding. And everything starts with, with a dream. You know, every journey begins with the first step and with a wonderful display of demonstration of that. Um, I actually sit on the Safety and Security, um, Committee and, um, this past, uh, last week kind of got to, um, go to plant services. And I've been to plant services before, but as I sat in the meeting, it was a phenomenal meeting, but as I left, I toured plant services and got to talk and interact with, with the, with our workers that work there. And it's quite unique. They are the people that come to work first in the morning, they stay through the duration of the day, and they're the last to leave. So I say all of that because every situation has to have a foundation. And all those that work with the plant services and keep our buildings and everything clean, so our security and cleanliness do a phenomenal, phenomenal, uh, job. Um, I also would like to share that, um, got a wonderful situation where I got to participate in Career Day at Nelson Elementary School, um, this past weekend. It was really, I mean, previous week. It was just really a phenomenal, phenomenal situation. Um, but the way which was designed and all the people that participated, um, in the career situation, uh, career setting was really phenomenal. My last statement is, I'm going to get in trouble with this tomorrow morning, but I'm going to go ahead and do it. Would you please give a big round of applause because Dr. Garrett Smith participated in the One City Marathon also. Give him a round of applause.
All right. Let's go, Karen.
Look at that. I'm in trouble. That's consecutive years. Oh, yes. Consecutive years, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ashby. Mr. Hunter?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are great things happening in Newport News Public Schools and in our city. Um, first, I would like to thank the two presenters tonight, Ms. Helen Smalls and Nancy Swett for those wonderful reports that you gave. That was fantastic to see the great things that are happening. I cannot reiterate again, the Spark Breakfast kickoff to all of those who had a part. The two young students who spoke from the heart, um, we're going to increase from two thousand kids to six thousand kids. They're going to be able to eat food. They're going to be in a safe place and they're going to do that summer loss to that cer- that summer gain. Wow. Unbelievable. Uh, I want to thank you to City Manager and Vice Mayor for listening to us tonight. I, I know we're both involved because we're in the city, but you know what? We're going to build a partnership, a relationship. And we're going to strengthen this relationship because without you, you know, we couldn't exist. And likewise, without the school system or having a good school system, the city couldn't really survive. So I tell you, as long as I'm on a school board, we're going to strengthen this relationship and that we're really going to work together and you're going to see what's going to happen. It isn't going to be even a better, you know, place to live. Um, thank you, Shelley, for still on some of my thunder. Um, Math Mardi Gras, financial literacy, this Saturday.
That's right.
Warwick High School.
K through five. I didn't see that.
K, K through five. Uh, but parents, we're going to have programs. I know my organization's going to have programs, uh, there that we can talk financial literacy. So come out, uh, bring your young children, bring your older children, uh, bring those students. There will be something there for everyone. Uh, last year it was standing room only. Uh, maybe that's why we moved it to Warwick High School.
We did.
And I, I want, let me tell you about, I'm going to be a personal deal this time because I'm a proud parent of, uh, two young ladies who graduated from this school system. And when my daughter was home, both of them were home from spring break at the university. Uh, my youngest daughter is number one in the business department. And that's, that's freshman all of the singer, her name sits at number one. She get that ex- she's got that attention here. In Newport News Public Schools.
Don't cry, man.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm, so I'm, I'm passionate about education. I'm passionate about this city. Um, Mr. City Manager, the, you said, you know, One City Marathon, this is going to be One City School and City Council. I mean, you, you started it and, you know, we're going to work together and we're going to finish together. So thank you again for both being here and asking you to see. I'm very passionate about, uh, this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Thank you. Now you've set the bar pretty hot for your daughter.
I didn't call it that.
I don't know. Um, let's see. I'm going to ask, uh, Ms. Simons to hand the award, the Magna Award down and, um, and use this opportunity once again to thank Vice Mayor Coleman and City Manager Jim Bory for being with us tonight, uh, as well as Budget Director, the city's Budget Director, Lisa Cipriano. Lisa has the tough job of making the numbers work. And, um, we have our own challenges here. Um, but I, um, uh, I have lived through a number of budgets and one of, one of the greatest things I've ever heard, even in a challenging budget year, was we can make, we can make, we can make whatever we need to and want to make work. It's just a matter of balancing priorities and, um, deciding what it is we're going to do, you know? Um, this, this team does that at the city level and, um, what we do wouldn't be possible without you. So thank you. Thanks for being here tonight. And you got a short meeting, so, um, I can't promise it'll always be that way. Um, you know, plaques and awards go out all the time. Um, and I think we look at these and we're, and we, we don't really know what's behind the frame. Um, my first year on the school board, I, I went to the National School Board Conference and we, we got an award that year, a Magna Award. And, um, it's not until you stand in, or you're there at, at, at a ceremony and you've got City of Fairfax, uh, or no, Fairfax County, um, with all of their clout, and you've got, um, you know, the school board members from Boston, from Atlanta, um, from all over the country. And you stand up from Little Newport News and you walk away with an award. And you want to know what that means? When you walk away with the top award in Virginia Beach, Virginia Beach is there and they, they just got a little award. All of a sudden, you're like, you know, hey, this is a big deal. This is a big deal. This, this award is recognizing Newport News in the top, as a top award winner in school divisions, ten thousand and higher. And that means that across the country, Newport News is going to go this year to the National School Board Conference. We're going to be number one. And we can be number one. We can be number one in many, many things. This just illustrates when we stick our neck out and we use our, we use our vision and we use our courage, we can go off and do something nobody else seems to be able to make do and make work anywhere else in the country. This is a proud moment. Couldn't have been done without a lot of support, uh, a lot of, all the support from City Council, the City Manager, um, I'm sure Lisa, um, making our, our numbers work. This is a big deal, folks. And, um, uh, I just wanted to take a moment to share that we'll be in Boston in a, in a few weeks and we will be, we will be turning heads. And Virginia Beach will wonder, why didn't they get one of these? So I want to thank the superintendent for the leadership and the rest of the board and the city for, um, leading us off into this wonderful accomplishment. And unless there's, um, any other business before us, we will stand adjourned. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you.
Good job, man. Good job.
[inaudible][1735.11]